WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904. For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equal Housing Leader Member FDIC.
This Fintress County Board of Commission is called to order. This month, the CHS color guard couldn't be here. They're on Christmas break, so please rise for the pledge to the flag led by Justin Miller, our first district commissioner, followed by our opening prayer by Jeff Green, fourth district commissioner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, we come to you this evening, Father, and we once again ask for wisdom. And Father, we thank you for wisdom you've given us in the past to serve the county in the manner that we have, Father. And I pray, God, that the decisions that we make would be favorable to you. And, Father, I pray for this county, that you bless it and bless those that live here. And, Father, may we be God fearing county and one that's favored upon by you. Be with us meeting here tonight and the decisions that we have to make. In Christ's name we ask.
Amen. Okay, we'll have roll call by Marilyn Stevens, our county court clerk.
Jimmy Johnson.
Here.
Yes, I know.
Here.
Jackie Ray.
Here.
Kim Davidson.
Here.
Ben Hughes.
Here.
Donald Williams.
Here.
Lester Redding.
Here.
Jeff Green.
Here.
Mary Smith.
Here.
Nine, four, one, absent. We do have a quorum. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes from our November the 20th, 2017 regular session of county court meeting. Any additions or corrections? I'll entertain a motion to pass those.
Make a motion to pass.
Have a motion to pass. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call, vote please.
Jim.
Four.
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 Follow.
Jim.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Four.
I'm gonna pass on that. I haven't read the minutes yet. How fast?
Four.
Eight, four, one pass, one absent. Motion passes. Next, we have approval of a notary applications. I have Rebecca Ruth Crockett and Linda Smith.
Looked approved.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Yes.
Four.
Four.
Jim.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Four.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is consideration of appointing Ricky R. Rains to the Fintress County Planning Commission to fill the seat of Rob Andries, whose term is, will be expiring of March of 2018. Wade, you're in from the fifth district. Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Wade, appoint him.
Have a motion to appoint Ricky R. Rains.
I'll say it.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Follow.
Danny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Motion passes.
Next, we have consideration of a resolution 2017-25 authorizing the submission of a Walmart community grant application for the Fintress County Sheriff's Department. Everybody had a chance to look at that?
My move, we accept it.
Move to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Four.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Follow.
Danny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Four.
Motion passes. Next, we have consideration of a surplus property list for the Fintress County Highway Department. Everybody had a chance to look that over. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Yes.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
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 Wade.
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent. Motion carries. Number 10, consideration of professional service proposal from Taco Service Solutions for the sprinkler system inspections at the Justice Center Building. This is to be divided between the jail, the sheriff, and the Justice Center budgets. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Danny.
Four.
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 Nine, four, one, absent. Motion carries. Next is a discussion of a letter to T.D.O.T. regarding their proposal of multi-use path between South Fintress Elementary and Clark Range High School. That letter is included in your packet, and that was written by me to T.D.O.T., basically telling them that we weren't interested in following up with that multi-use path, that it's going to cost in excess of $900,000 to that part of the project. And because of liability purposes and community input, we weren't interested in doing that. In addition, that would have cost several hundred thousand dollars for this commission and the county to have pursued that project.
Mr. Sherman, I make motion, we tell them to drop it and forget it.
Okay, motion by Donald to send the letter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Follow.
Danny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Eight, four, one pass, one absent. Motion passes. This is not on the agenda, but directly related to that in section four of the highway project, which we refer to as the bridge project in Clark Range. We have met with T.D.O.T. right away officials, and they have decided to acquire the Clark Range Convenience Center and the Clark Range Volunteer Fire Department. Jeff, do you want to explain that a little bit more in depth?
Well, and also may I talk about section five as well?
Yes.
In section four, it looks like the fire hall and the convenience center will be relocated. However, during a period of time, we will never be without a fire hall. Once, you know, once we, it gets acquired from the state, or at least we know what the state is gonna pay for it, we can at that point start making arrangements to relocate the fire hall. We will not be without fire protection at, you know, at any time. And the same with the convenience site. You know, we're looking at two or three different options right now of where to put each of those. And along that same token, they will currently, in their current design on section five, it appears they're gonna be taking part of South Fintress Community Park, the front parking lots and so on. But to expedite this process, I suggest that I'll make a motion that we ask you to draft a letter stating that the commission supports the current design of section four and section five, you know, even though we're gonna, the county's gonna be giving up a couple of sites that we're gonna have to, you know, do something about in the future.
And that was in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? I want to say this before, before we go into that. We have, we have pushed heavily for the completion of the Highway 127 project. That's gonna have a tremendous impact on the economy of Fintress County. When that does come in, though, yes, it's gonna be inconvenient. And there'll be a period of inconvenience as far as changing out with our convenience center and our, our fire hall. But we look at this as an absolutely golden opportunity for Fintress County and for the Clark Range community in particular to gain by getting an upgrade in both facilities. We've got a great volunteer fire department out there. We've got a good solid waste department, and those are gonna get upgrades. We're excited about that prospect. And so we're looking forward to an absolute upgrade in Fintress County's facilities and, you know, so we move forward eagerly with that. Any other discussion? Leslie?
We're not giving them away to the state.
No, they're...
We're waiting on the appraisal.
We're waiting on the appraisals. And we do know that the appraisal, the number has been made for the fire department, the convenience center. They should be getting us those numbers somewhere first of January. So we'll know pretty soon exactly what numbers we have to work with there. Plus, we're also looking at grants with Amanda Maner, our grant writer, that we may be able to get some additional money to pour into those things. When we looked at the fire hall, its design, the way it's been built and things of that nature, we've got a golden opportunity, folks, to really bring something of great quality to a department that deserves it. We've got great firefighters. And, you know, we're going to continue to emphasize saving lives and, you know, giving the best service that we possibly can to the people of this county. So with that said, roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Nine, four, one, absent. Motion passes. Next, number 12, discussion of ambulance service directors pay. Kim, do you want to discuss what happened with the finance committee and their recommendations, please?
We had a meeting a couple weeks ago in, to discuss the salary for the ambulance director. We knew we had to look at that salary because we were not being competitive. We took into consideration other counties, what they paid, and we chose counties that were relevant to us, number of runs that they had, population and whatnot. So taking all that into consideration, we, we didn't get to the level that they are, but we hoped to get into range a little closer, so hopefully we could recruit a good director and retain a good director, because there's a lot of training that goes into it. So the plan that we came up with was a base salary of $48,000. And then we looked at some possible incentives to, not only do we just want to hire a great person, but we want to encourage them to be even better. So we looked at that. So we did the $48,000 as a base with incentive pay to increase that by $1,200, and that would be if they would get certified in billing and coding. That would be an opportunity for the county to take a little more control in what we build on runs and everything, to actually bring in more money, and that is gonna be a plus. So everything we're doing, it's not, we're spending money to bring money in. So that's, that's how we looked at it. And then the other thing would be an incentive based on reducing overtime. That is a little difficult at this time because we are short staffed. We know that. We would not ask anybody to cut overtime until you have adequate staffing. We will never, do we in any moment want to jeopardize the safety of people in county based on anything, you know? So our first concern is giving the level of care that we need, so we would want that as a priority. But once we get staffing, then the possibility is there to be an incentive. What can you do to cut overtime? How can we save money? So again, if you cut overtime, that actually would pay for any incentive they would get. They would actually cover that, plus bring money into the county. And again, every decision we make, I hope y'all realize, we spend a lot of time researching it and looking at what we're doing. We just don't blindly pull numbers out. We don't just blindly do anything. We try to make educated choices. This salary, again, was trying to be competitive. And for people, some of the staff that work there, you know, to the salary we had before was actually asking them to take a pay cut. And I don't know about any of y'all, but I don't know very many people that would take a position to increase their responsibilities and their job duties for less pay. I don't think that's anything anybody would want to do. So again, when we came up with this salary, there is more that went into it than just blindly kicking out a number. So that being said, that was what was discussed and what was, we came up with in the finance committee meeting.
Very well said, Kim. And was that in the form of a motion?
That was in the form of a motion.
I have a motion to increase ambulance service pay to $48,000 with $1,200 additional pay for getting coding and billing certification. And with, I think, the pledge of this commission to continue to look at ways to help incentivize that salary as we move forward. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Had to pass. I don't have enough information on this subject.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Yes.
Lester.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Seven, four, two, one against, one pass.
Seven, four, one, one against, one pass? Motion passes.
The number don't...
Boy, I think that number was, is it eight and one?
No, it was seven, four. We had one pass, one against, and one absent.
Okay. Seven, four, one against, one pass, one absent. Motion passes. Okay, number 13, consideration of appointment of Fintress County Ambulance Service Director. We want to first off thank Michael Paul Beatty for his service as ambulance service director. He has taken the job elsewhere. We'll be moving on. So we thank him for his service. We advertised for the job and got five applications. We've, myself and Becky Crockett, our new HR director, sent to five interviews with five exceptional candidates, three from within our own ambulance service, two from outside. We considered administrative ability and experience, leadership skills, budgetary experience, and things of that nature. And I think clearly we, we found that Micah Dunford was by far the best candidate we have, and he is willing to take that job. So I would nominate Micah Dunford for ambulance service director pending your, your vote. I'll entertain a motion for that appointment.
I make a motion to appoint him.
Have a motion to appoint. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Pass.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Eight, four, one pass, one absent.
Eight, four, one pass, one absent. Micah Dunford is the new ambulance service director. Micah, would you want to speak to the commission?
I'd just like to say thank you for your confidence, and I'll put in as much effort as I can to continue making this a great ambulance service. So thank you again for your wonderful...
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
I'd like to explain. As far as awarding extra money to him, I got, Mike, I think, did a great job in everything. But right now, we're having to borrow money from ourselves to pay our own jail payment over here, $450,000. We're slapping money around like, you know, we're gonna have to start watching our money, or you're gonna have to put a tax increase next year, you know, bottom line. So we're borrowing Peter to pay Paul right now. So that's the only thing I'm saying, that I'm trying to watch taxpayer's money.
I would like to counter that by saying that we have passed a budget in the black, that we're, we're very happy with where we are. This commission has been great stewardship of the county's money, and I can assure you there will be no budget or tax increase next year.
Oh, I appreciate that, but, you know, I'm just saying, if we don't watch...
We're looking quizzical. Okay, moving along. Consideration of the following budget amendments. Leslie, do you want to explain this Justice Center one?
Very briefly, I'll say that I came to you all on behalf of the Administrative Office of the Courts, and they had sent a letter out. Every year, we have to file a report of courtroom security over at the Justice Center, and we didn't have some of the minimum security requirements. Two of them were, of course, entryway security, and the other one were courtrooms, cameras in all the courtrooms and all the secure areas, including the hallway behind the courtroom where the judges pass and the witnesses all are, and the grand jury room, that sort of thing. So when I came to you all, we had two proposals. Our number one was getting the one and a half ton planters that sit out front that keep anybody from driving through the building, which we've had that breach here, obviously, in 2015. And the other one was, of course, the camera system upgrade for four more cameras. Well, we've had a couple of potential breaches of people coming in and out of the courtrooms when they were just immediately unlocked in the mornings, no cameras to monitor them back in the back. So when I said, oh, we probably won't get maybe one of these if we get the $4,000 planters, that's at least one thing we'll get, well, we got both of them. So about $4,000 in the 10% match that we talked about before. I guess the thing is, don't let me and Amanda and Judge Burnett write any more grants if you don't, don't want a match. But those are things that, like I said, the state says those are our minimum security requirements, and those are two of the ones that we did not meet and had had breaches on. So they gave us the $40,000 to put out the planters and put in the four new cameras. We talked about not having to bid out the cameras because they are simply using software, buying four more licensures of software that we already have in place, unless you scrap the entire system and bid it all out again. The ones that they would do are to simply come in and put in four more cameras, sell us four more licensures, and they're willing to do that. And I think you all have seen the cost outline there, it's pretty fair, so...
Bottom line is, we're gonna get about $42,000 in upgrades in our security at the Justice Center, and it's gonna cost the county literally just about $4,000. I'll entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Follow.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you all, and I have to leave early. I apologize, I'm going to a funeral.
Thank you. Marcia, you ready?
I'm ready. The next one on the agenda is the solid waste amendment. Last month, the commission passed to pay the solid waste director for being, getting the designation of certified public administrator. This simply puts the money for that in the paid line item. We didn't have enough money in that to cover it.
Okay, I'll take, entertain a motion.
I have a question. It was my understanding we were reimbursing $1,500 to cover the costs. Is that not what we did?
No. It was to reward the education and the time and effort, and I'm sure there was, there was money as far as travel and things of that nature, but it was, the state, it encourages counties to do this for those who become certified administrators. As a matter of fact, most counties, the reward is much, much greater than this. I think $4,500 to $3,000 is common.
Okay. That's, that was my question. I thought we were reimbursing him for his expenses, and if we were reimbursing for expenses, I was wondering why there were tax, you know, consequences to, to a reimbursement.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to take care of that.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine, four, one, absent.
Motion passes. Next, civil defense EMA.
Okay, attached to the budget amendment is the grant amendment. Normally, we get $1,500 a year, or, I'm sorry, $15,000, EMPG grant for the EMA budget, and they've increased it to $20,000. So this is just adding, because the budget was set up at 15. I didn't know about this at the time that the budget was set up. So this just adds that $5,000 to his budget. This is all reimbursed by the state.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jackie.
Four.
Kim.
Four.
Jimmy.
Four.
Donald.
Four.
Lester.
Nine four one absent. Motion passes. Uh, next, Health Department.
Okay, on the Health Department, that, that line that says, uh, one oh one, five five, one nine oh, five ninety-nine, that number is correct. The description is wrong. It should say other charges. Um, this is also an amendment to their state budget, uh, adding five thousand dollars for other non-personnel expenses. So, uh, again, this is one that all of this money will be reimbursed by the state.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
JP.
Four.
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 Donald.
Four.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine four one absent.
Nine four one absent. Motion passes. And then ambulance service.
Kim, were you gonna do that with Kim?
Uh, yeah, Larry'd asked me to talk about that. Um, there's a, a new way of willing it, enhanced Medicaid reimbursement project that we knew that was coming about. Um, it's a way, you know, involves the way that we get paid for Medicaid, which in turn actually brings more money into the county, but we have to pay a fee associated with that. So, um, this time the fee was, the first assessment was seven thousand, seven hundred twenty-one dollars, but we will actually receive fifteen thousand dollars back, so more than, almost doubling our money. So to me, it's a pretty good investment. So if we wanna offset tax increases, we're gonna do things like this, bring more money into the county. So, um, that being said, because we do know this is gonna be a reoccurring fee that we're gonna have, um, we would like to set aside twenty-four thousand dollars to look like bring back forty-five thousand dollars into the county. So my motion would be that we set aside the twenty-four thousand dollars to cover that expense for that billing.
Okay, motion set aside. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
JP.
Four.
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 Wade.
Four.
Nine four one absent. Motion passes. Uh, under any other business, I think we need, uh, as we discussed in the work session, with the ambulance service roof, um, we need to have a motion to make a change order, uh, in that project. Uh, there was, uh, oversight in the bid request. We need to replace the aluminum gutters, uh, the cost of that, which is five hundred dollars, and replace that with, uh, some panels over the block where the, 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 uh, contractors found, uh, the, the leak, leaks were occurring, and that was for a cost of fifteen hundred dollars. So there's a difference in one thousand dollars that needs to be approved.
Make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second to approve that. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
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 Donald.
Four.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Wade.
Four.
Nine four one absent. Any other business to come before this commission? Ms. Whitaker?
I was here last month, and we discussed my pay raise getting bumped up to my proper pay scale, and I was wanting to ask you if you would consider that, or could we do that?
Going to affect the fiscal year one.
We-
The press, the, uh, uh, Chairman, the precedent that has been set by this commission or, or former commissions, uh, was in the case of, uh, Ms. Alice Kirby, who came to, uh, to work for the, uh, Fentress County, uh, government from the school system, and there was some time that had passed, um, that, um, she wasn't aware that she could get that credit. When the commission considered that, they, they, uh, voted to get it in the next fiscal year. So the-
What is gonna be in the ne- the next fiscal year?
It would be the next fiscal year, uh, your supervisor-
Cause I had not really a definite answer on that.
The what?
Cause I hadn't really got a definite answer, like, from-
They, they would consider that, and I think as a precedent, that would be done.
It would be done in July.
Uh, and your, your supervisor, Ms. Marilyn, would have that in her budget for the next coming year, and it would be approved that way. That's, that's what they have done in the past, and under advice for our legal counsel, that's, that's what they advised us to do at this, this point in time. Any other comments, uh, commissioners or?
You can be assured, at least for me.
Uh, it was-
It's five.
It was five steps. It'd be approximately two thousand dollar raise annually.
Okay, thank you.
Any other business to come before this commission? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.